Okay, good evening. It is six o'clock. Welcome to the October 1st, 2019 City Council meeting, and we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call, please.
Dave Bowman.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Roy Anderson.
Present.
Judy Ann Files.
Present.
Doug Glasswell. All council members are present.
And any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. And this is a time where if someone would like to address council on an issue that's not on the agenda, you may come forward and talk to council. Is there anybody that would like to do that this evening? Seeing none, we'll move right along. And number six, approval of minutes. City Council consideration of the minutes of the September 17th, 2019 regular City Council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 17th, 2019 City Council meeting as presented.
I'll second that.
Please vote. And that's unanimous. Thank you. And next is youth council applicant interviews, and Michaela Unruh is going to handle that for us.
Alright. Well, thank you, council. So this evening, we have four applicants for the youth council for the 2019-2020 term to come before you to interview. And we are going to repeat a similar interview process as to what's been done in the past. So the candidates will be able to come up and sit in the chairs when it's their turn. We'll have them come to the podium, draw a question out of the bowl here at random, state their name in the question, and then respond to you with a brief, up to one-minute response for them. So at this time, I would ask all of the applicants to please come forward.
And just to clarify, we have more applicants than we're going to be able to hear from another night.
That is correct. Yep, there were quite a few school events this evening. And so we will be having the remaining applicants for the youth council come forward at the next meeting on October 15th. Excellent. Alright, and so if we want to start at the end here, if you want to come forward, lucky first seats.
You told us the wrong end.
So you can draw questions, and you'll see I'll have a timer running, and they'll be a little late there to show you just.
Okay.
Before you even, before you even read your question, can you just introduce yourself and tell us your name
and what grade you're in, where you go to school?
I'm Zach Aldroid. I go to Montrose High School. I'm a junior. And my question is, what is one thing you would like to see changed in Montrose and why? As, in the high school, one thing I see that is fairly big, even now, is kind of use of things like vaping and drugs. And I know that there has been certain laws passed to kind of help with that. But I think it would be really cool to even see further things. I think it would help a lot of people and kind of make our city a safer place.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rhiannon Allen. I go to Peak Virtual Academy, and I'm a senior. In your own words, what does it mean to serve as a voice for Montrose youth? So it means to, you know, provide a youthful point of view, you know, things that we think about that are, that we would like. So for example, activities, opportunities for our future, and other things that can help us when we grow and graduate from high school, you know, just providing that, and also kind of considering the youth issues that are going on throughout high school.
Thank you.
I'm Mari Wilson, and I'm a sophomore at Montrose High School. Describe a time when you took on a leadership role. What did you learn? So during my time last year at youth council, we had committees. And I really liked my leadership role, like being in charge of decorations and things like that. And so it was a fun opportunity for me to voice my opinion and having people listen to me.
Thank you.
My name is Gunnison Clamp. I am homeschooled, and I am a sophomore. What is one challenge you believe the youth couns, council could help address in our community? One challenge is, um... Maybe, um... Can't quite think of one. Um... One challenge.
What kind of things do you think youth council should be involved in? Is another way to look at that.
Uh... Numerous, numerous, uh, youth activities and, um, maybe, uh... One challenge.
Maybe just tell us why you'd like to be on youth council.
Yeah. I'm sure I'll understand these questions a bit better once I get at least a year of experience. This is my first year, perhaps, serving on the council. Some of the reasons I'd like to join the council this year is to kind of get, uh, the experience of how a city is run, just city government, everything that goes into that. I see all the projects going on around town, the new roundabout, the one on, the other one on Hillcrest they put in a year or so ago. And just seeing this, and, uh, also volunteering at the visitor center got me a little bit of a first experience in this. It's just, uh, really, uh, it's kind of fascinated me how a city is run. And when I got the opportunity to, um, uh, sign up for the council, I took it because I think it'd be a really great learning experience, and I'll come out having learned a lot.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so we'll see you all in two weeks. We'll hear the rest of the interviews, and then make a decision on who will be on youth council. Have a great week, and I know it's busy. This is for, well, I think everybody here probably already knows. This is homecoming week, and there's all kinds of activities the kids are doing. I believe Powder Puff is tonight. The parade is tomorrow night. Must be something going on on, what's going on on Thursday? Volleyball game, okay, and the homecoming game on Friday. So lots of things going on. I appreciate you folks taking your time to come talk to us, and we'll see you again in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
And that being said, you are welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but you are also welcome to go home, and we're just going to assume you all are going to leave and do homework if you leave. So don't feel bad if you walk out of here.
Yeah, they were great answers, all of you, so thanks a lot.
Thanks for your time. Thanks for coming tonight.
Alright. Next item, number eight, is new hotel and restaurant liquor license application. City Council consideration of a new hotel and restaurant liquor license at 216 North Townsend Avenue for Shanghai Palace Incorporated, doing business as Shanghai Palace for consumption on the licensed premises. And we'll turn it over to City Attorney Stephen Alcorn.
If the applicant would come forward, please.
And I will open a hearing.
So if you'd introduce yourself to council and tell us a little bit about your establishment.
Um, my name is Chan Hong, and I own Shanghai Palace with my family. We have everybody's, it's my siblings, my mom and my dad, and my uncle.
And how long have you been operating in the restaurant business?
Um, about, for me personally?
Uh, the family.
Oh, the family. Um, well, my dad's been in about 30 years. Mom's been in about the same amount of time, and then our family, 15 years or so.
Okay, have you previously held a liquor license?
We held one until you arrived.
Okay, and how many violations of the liquor code did you have during that time period?
When my family owned it, none, but when my uncle owned it, I think they had two violations.
And what were the violations for? I mean, and I realize that this is, he is not the applicant, but I'm trying to get a handle on what it's for.
Um, he didn't personally tell me, told, tell me, but I heard stories. I think it was for, one for underage drinking, and the other one was when, I think my cousin let people behind the bar, when they shouldn't have been behind the bar.
Uh, one of the roles of uncles is to make stupid mistakes so the nieces and nephews don't. So what have you learned from that experience that you're going to incorporate into Shanghai Palace?
Um, well, I'm a bar, I used to be a bar manager in Sacramento, and I've been a bar manager for three years there. So I know how to run a bar. I understand underage drinking, fake IDs, and the ramifications for if I do get hit with a violation. And we, I'm not willing to lose my liquor license when I went through all this trouble to get it.
Uh, so what, uh, how do you envision alcohol being served? Are we talking a full bar? Is there going to be a type of bar that people, type of place people come in specifically for drinks, or is it a drinks along with their meal?
Drinks along with their meals. But we do have a bar area where I'm hoping that people, if they do want to come in for happy hour, they can sit there and have a couple appetizers and drinks, kind of like Chili's and Applebee's.
Uh, so do you envision this the type of place that, uh, you know, you're flashing the lights as last call at 2:00 in the morning, or?
Definitely not. We wake up early for work the next day, and this is not going to be one of those restaurants.
Okay, so it's a restaurant, not a bar, is what?
I mean, we, yeah, basically. I mean, no afterparties or anything like that.
So, I kind of weave, there's two things we have to do today at this hearing, and I try to weave my questions so you really don't realize what we're getting at, but we do. First, we have to determine that the, uh, the community needs another liquor license. Uh, then the second, we need to determine that you, as the license holder, is of good moral character, and you'll uphold the liquor laws. And I think we've discussed that a bit already. Uh, but why do you think that we need yet one more restaurant serving alcohol?
In this town, I believe that a place that, where you can relax and have a good meal, and have a beer or a cocktail once in a while with your meal, it'd be a good place to do it. Our family, kind of crazy, but we all love each other, and, um, I'm hoping that they will learn from experience, and eventually, when I, I'm planning to move in a couple of years. And so I'm hoping to pass on what I know to them, and so that the community will learn to love them. Because we want to be in this community a long time. I'm just going back to California for a year for school. But we're planning to be here for a while, and we're hoping that this community will welcome us.
When you are working at the restaurant, are you having customers request alcohol?
Yes, sometimes at 12:00 in the morning. So, yeah. A lot of people have been asking if we're ever going to get a liquor license, and I keep telling them, we'll eventually get there when we're ready. And people do ask for alcohol. A lot of them ask for beers, some people ask for margaritas. And we do get a, a lot of people who do ask.
The typical margarita and Chinese dinner?
I mean, we had a Shanghai margarita from Telluride.
Okay.
That we kind of made our own. Yeah.
Okay.
It was very popular.
Uh, so you had a petition in place for signatures, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'll let council know. There is 158 signatures submitted. 64 signatures were determined to be insufficient. Most were outside the city limits. 94 signatures were determined to be valid and in support of the license. Highlights seem to have a lot of beer drinkers, because it's love the food, need beer though. Would like a beer with my meal. Nice place to drink, close to home, have great, great food beverages, will enhance the atmosphere. Are typical of what we're getting. Do you think there's other information that we haven't talked about that you think would help council make a determination if you are the type of person they want with a liquor license in town?
Um, not at the moment, because I'm really nervous, and I can't come up with a very intelligent answer.
I specialize in making people nervous.
Knowing that is important.
Okay, I'll turn the hearing back over to Mr. Mayor.
Alright. Um, are there anybody in the audience that would like to support this liquor license? Mr. Stockton, please.
Dave Stockton, 3009 Cook Drive. I'll support it. I've been to Shanghai Palace several times, not in Telluride, but here in Montrose, and I think it's a very professionally-run organization, family-friendly. Let's go for it. And it's always good to have options. And I don't want to say the more the better, but I think it's good to have options. And Shanghai Palace brings a, a good option to us in the oriental food business, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody that would be in opposition to this license? With that, I'll turn it back to council. Any questions? Have you taken the city liquor license class?
Not this city. I'm certified from Telluride. So I, I've been to TIPS training with Officer Halper, and so I'm TIPS certified. I think it's for Colorado. But not personally in Montrose.
Do you have other members working there that have taken the class?
Yes, um, my brother and my sister, both my brothers and my sister have taken the class as well.
So what about, like, any other servers at the restaurant? Is it your goal that they would all take it, or?
Eventually. If they are planning to become bartenders and they're planning to serve alcohol, I would like them to know, because if they get caught selling to underage people, I get hit for the liquor license. And then so it's my responsibility to make sure that they're trained as well.
Okay, can I ask one more?
Sure.
I have a favorite question. So let's say hypothetically, I come in for dinner with my granddaughter, and I just order two Singapore slings. What would, how would that be handled?
I would ask you why you're drinking two, sir, when this is with your granddaughter, first of all. And I would make sure that you only have one first, and if it's halfway, then you can have your next one. Or more than halfway, if it's like about one-third.
Even though I look 21, would you card my granddaughter?
If you looked 21?
No, I'm just, in this scenario.
Um, I usually card everybody that looks like they're 40 or older at least. Especially because a lot of kids nowadays kind of look like they're older when they aren't, so.
Okay, thanks.
Just for fun now.
Any other questions, comments? I will close the hearing, and would entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the hotel restaurant liquor license for 216 North Townsend Avenue for Shanghai Palace Incorporated, doing business as Shanghai Palace.
I'll second it.
Please vote.
My thing is still blinking. It's mine.
Just, just a, just a, just a glance. It's okay.
Now, are we ready?
Okay.
And that passes unanimously. Good luck, and.
Thank you.
I'm sure we'll all be there to have some great oriental food. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And moving right along. Number nine, ordinance 2487 on second reading. City Council consideration of ordinance 2487 on second reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, designating 39 West Main Street, Montrose, Colorado, as a City of Montrose historic property pursuant to paragraph 4-15 of the official code of the City of Montrose. And we'll turn it over to Assistant City Manager Anne Morgan Thaler.
Thank you, Mayor Bowman, and City Council. Before you is the second reading of an ordinance to designate the building located at 39 West Main Street as a historic property. This building is known as the Potato Growers Building, and it is a prized example of a warehouse-style architectural building. This is the second building that you've reviewed for historic property designation. The first was City Hall, and this is the first building that has been voluntarily designated by a private property owner, and we hope there'll be many more. The process for designation included the Historic Preservation Commission reviewing this application, and they recommended approval, finding that it met the eligibility and integrity criteria required by our municipal code. On September 17th, the council reviewed this application on first reading, and you approved the ordinance. We have not made any changes to the ordinance between first reading and second reading. And the applicant and owner is here, in case you'd like any information, but, and I can answer any additional questions that you may have.
I can accept public comment on this? Oh, come on. Get up and talk longer than three minutes so I can tell you to sit down.
Great, Greg. I have a question.
What? I'm Greg Fi, does this work? Oh, yeah. I'm Greg Fissering. I'm the applicant for the historic designation of the Potato Growers Building. And if you have any questions about what we're going to be doing, we already started some stuff, so. Interior stuff.
Greg, last time we asked, I asked David, what was the most unusual thing that you found in, in going through this building? So you, would you tell me what you have found that you thought was really historic and interesting?
Well, I always liked the vault room downstairs, down in the basement. That's cool. And everybody asked why they had a vault room, and I said, well, they had more money than the banks, because they accepted all the agriculture on one side, have to pay the farmers, and on the other side was the train. They got the money from the train. So it has vault room downstairs, vaulted ceiling with a big diabol door on it and stuff. It's kind of cool. So you just wouldn't expect that inside the warehouse, but that's what's there. And that, then recently, we just found some stuff when they were starting a demo. There's a bunch of ledgers from where's, where people's stuff was stored. And a lot of names that you'd recognize from around, you know, family names that you'd recognize are on there where they stored their potatoes and their onions, and it's kind of cool. So that was neat.
Thank you.
Yeah. And that, and oh, and the, the pallet elevator in the middle, that is the coolest thing. That's staying.
That is pretty neat. Um...
That's the interior stuff.
How much can you, or how much are you planning on changing a historic building? Like what?
On the outside, we're actually going to restore it to what it looked like in the only known picture that we have from 1909 of what it looked like. In other words, there's going to be a deck on the front, right along town, uh, Main Street, and then the deck all on the side. And that's, a lot of that's going to depend on what kind of historical grants we can get, because it's extremely expensive. At first, we weren't going to redo that deck on the, on the east side, because it's just so bad. But in order to retain its whole historic character, we're going to redo all that, so it's going to look like it did when it was built. So, and we found out a lot of information about the building. It was kind of cool. The guy, the architect that designed it, it was his first job, and he wanted to make it of the most modern architectural and engineering capabilities, because it used to be a wooden structure there that burnt down in a fire caused by the lumberyard that was next door. And it burned down, so they said, we're going to build this thing back. It's going to be all brick and nice and of the, of the highest quality. And so they rebuilt the thing, and he's also the architect for this, or City Hall, or this building? One of these, one of these buildings that the city had, and about three others around the area that were built within about 15 years of that time. So it's kind of cool, and that was his first foray into building it. And the engineer that's looked at it has said, God, this thing was built like a, yeah. It's, because it's a really wide, three courses of bricks, and the walls are all stabilized. They're, we should have to do a couple little things to stabilize a little better. Uh, but there's only an inch variation in the wall all the way down, and level is unbelievable. See, this thing's only a quarter inch off from one end to the other. They didn't have lasers back then. This is all, they probably did it with a hose level, you know, back and forth, so it's kind of interesting. So, any other questions? Okay, thank you for your consideration.
I think on behalf of the entire council, we wish you nothing but the best of luck.
And we also refer to it as the money pit.
Thank you for doing that.
Any other questions or comments from council? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2487 on second reading.
I'll second that.
Please vote. And there you go. Best of luck. Thank you. And number 10, ordinance 2488, second reading. City Council consideration of ordinance 2488 on second reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, creating the Riverwood Estates Improvement District. City Engineer, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is the second reading of one of two ordinances. The first, creating the Riverwood District, and the next one you guys will see will be for the assessments for what's now completed, the Riverwood Water Distribution System. This is all for creating the district to repay the capital construction costs of the water line extensions to switch them over to the city's water system. And I think since the first reading, I don't know of anything that's changed, so I think just on course.
Scott doesn't bring things to council very often that provide money, so I think. Just for that reason, we should probably accept.
I can accept real public comment? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2488 on second reading.
I'll second that.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Uh, item 11, ordinance 2489, second reading. City Council consideration of ordinance 2489 on second reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, establishing the rate of assessment for the Riverwood Estates Improvement District. And again, City Engineer Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So two of two. This sets the assessment. Prior to going into this project, we had utility connection repayment agreements with all of the residents. Um, these agreements established a cap that we would not go over 500, or we didn't anticipate to go over $550,000 for the capital construction. Uh, we kind of aimed to overpromise and underdeli, or underpromise and overdeliver. Big, important distinction there. Um, and that came true here. Everything went well on the project. We came in at $433,873.58, so essentially 100,000 under. Um, all of the residents pay the actual costs, so that cost will get divided among the 35 residents for repayment. They can come in and pay it right up front without any interest. Um, or if they don't, it'll just automatically be assessed against their property at 4% interest over 20 years to repay the city, so. And I don't think anything's changed since the first go-around, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
First, an ordinance from the public? And if not, council?
About how many, uh, about how many dollars are we looking at per residency?
Uh, it ends up being 12,000 something apiece. Let me pull up my calculator. Never trust my head.
Yeah, I remember it being 12-something.
Three, eight, seven, three, about 35. Yep, 12,400 apiece.
I think it's worth noting, too, you said 4% interest the city will earn on those who pay over time, as compared to the rate that we get on the rest of the water funds, which is like one or a fraction of one. I don't know the exact number, but a lot less, right?
Yeah, and this is kind of a really unique opportunity. Um, the way this all panned out, we're using the funds from a special improvement district that were just sitting there, um, that have accrued for various reasons over time. And if I misspeaking here, Bill, chime in. But, yeah, those were essentially earning, you know, very little interest. Um, and this allows those funds to be used for a good purpose while they're sitting there. Um, and, yeah, greater, do a bit, get a better return for us in the meantime. Um, while still being a reasonable rate, cheaper than if they were to go out and get personal loans and things of that sort. and things of that sort, so finding that good middle ground for the.
Yeah, so a win-win for everybody.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Am I correct, one hundred percent of the residents chose this? Nobody had to make them do it, right?
Correct.
They're choosing to do this.
Yep, so when we went into it, we, when we started construction, we had about seventy-five percent signed up. Um, when we went to bid with the project, um, by the time we started construction and were underway, all but two, um, had signed up and then, um, eventually, uh, those last two came to us and, and signed up, so, um, every, and we set it up that way. So we built, um, the new system completely independent of the one that had essentially failed, um, so that if people did wanna stay on it, they could, um, and there was just, nobody wanted to. So, they came to all us and kind of a great testament to how, you know, rough that system was in, um, that people were very eager to, um, come onto our system without any contention at all.
I think also, Scott, since they are outside the city limits, they pay a little higher rate on the water?
Correct, so their base charge and their usage charges are both at one and a half times the typical rate. And that, um, kinda two things allows them to stay in, in the county. Um, a lot of the other infrastructure isn't up to city standards and so, um, we weren't overly, it, it would've been a lot, we would've been taking on pretty good liabilities if they were to annex, so this kinda finds that balance point between those two and allows them to stay in the county. And that's all through our code.
So, and this is sort of the final, we've been dealing with this for several months now and this is our, the final action of council?
Correct, yep, so, um, this is the last piece for you guys. The next follow-up will be, there's a thirty-day period where they can come in and pay, um, and after that point, um, finance passes on all of the amounts to the county, um, and then essentially they just send us, I think, quarterly tax payments or, or, I don't know how that works, but we get, uh, money back from the assessor that they collect and passes through us.
Yeah, I just think it's a fantastic job that all the city staff did to put all this together, to help a group of people that really needed help. I suppose we didn't have to do this, they're not in city limits, but the city chose to do it. It didn't cost anybody outside or in the city any money. We did a great cooperation with, uh, the county, so just a, a great example of great staff job and city and county working together, so congratulations to everybody. And with that, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2489 on second reading.
I'll second it.
And please vote. And that passes unanimously. And with that, I'll turn it over to City Manager Bill Bell for staff reports.
I just have a couple things. The main thing, uh, we've gotten a lot of community questions about our budget process and that's because we're in the middle of budget season. We're actually at the tail end of budget season, so, uh, just wanna say thanks, Shaney's not here tonight, but I wanna thank all the staff, the department heads and, and our finance director, Shaney Wittenberg, for putting together a proposed budget that's been delivered to city council and we'll be meeting this week with the council to go over that. Uh, we're still, uh, answering a lot of questions related to budget processes and procedures and what's included in the budget, what's not, and we really like those questions cause it gives us an opportunity to explain what we do at the city and why we do it and, and still wanna put out a call for our citizen budget advisory committee, we're always looking for members of that committee and, and would love to have people sign up for that and they can do that through the clerk's office. And then, uh, also want to highlight some of the things that we're working on as we move forward this fall and I'll beat the merit of the punch on this one and, and announce how excited we are to be hosting the boys state championship golf tournament, which is gonna be Monday, the seventh and the eighth next week, Monday and Tuesday of next week at the Bridges and hopefully people in the community can get out there and root on the boys golf team who won regionals and, uh, we're planning on having them win state, I mean, why not? They, they don't have anything better to do, so they've been working toward that, we're , uh, very excited for Micah Stangby and, and, uh, Jordan Jennings and Ryan Lord's and, and Jake Legg and Mark Matheny, all those guys that played on varsity this year and really, uh, it's a testament, I think, to the coaching staff that they have and Tom Young, our golf pro at Black Canyon is part of that and we're really proud of his efforts and the time he's put in. It's just been really fun to watch him get passionate about the kids and, and the programs and it all starts with free golf for kids at Black Canyon Golf Course and partnerships with, uh, the Bridges and Cobble Creek to get the youth golf program put together, uh, with the help of a few key citizens who donated to that effort and we'll expand that next year. So, just really excited about that and I'm gonna be taking some time off work, if the mayor signs my vacation requests, to go and hang out with the kids out there and cheer them on and we, we're just excited about that. I just was reading an email from the, uh, basketball coach, we're gonna partner again with the Alpine Classic this year for the basketball program and so we're gonna meet next week to start talking about that and roll into basketball season. So, as a reminder to everybody, competitive sports brings a lot of people to our community and, uh, when we ran the analysis several years ago, it's in the millions of dollars when you count all the families and all the teams coming in, in all the different sports to Montrose from all over the state and beyond the state when you're talking about the major tournaments, so, uh, that's why we support those things and we wanna continue to do that. That's all I have.
Well, since you talked about golf, I won't either. I wanna congratulate you, Scott Murphy, I believe the credit goes to you or to staff for that very clever sign that you put on Hillcrest. I think that sign that says, if you don't go thirty miles an hour, we'll put the potholes back in, is a great way to get attention. Okay, I have talked to numerous people who definitely are slowing down because they're seeing that sign and it's making an impact. So I think you were clever, thank you for doing it.
It took three of us to come up with that idea, for the record.
You engineers, you're so funny.
My, my son was.
Some people have suggested raises because of the sign, but that's not how we do things, sorry.
I was gonna say, my son was visiting here for soccer from Gunnison and on his way home, he was so impressed with your sign, he sent a text and he says, Dad, what a great sign, like I had anything to do with it. So, is it my turn or are you done?
Yeah, I've got.
Okay, so I just wanted to point out, we got the October first copy, I hope the camera can see it here, of the city beat and the front page talks about the comprehensive plan that's in progress right now and it's a great write-up if you haven't been involved on what's going on there. And then on the back, I think this is really cool, there's, uh, uh, an article about the landscape of business services in Montrose. And it's a terrific write-up and I wanna encourage everyone, you'll get this with your utility bill and, uh, please read it, I think you'll learn a lot about what's going on. And if you don't get a city water bill, it's on the city website, so, uh, either way, you oughta check it out, that's all.
Um, I would just like to invite everyone to tomorrow morning's, uh, Montrose Community Forum. We are going to be hosting the school board candidates for a brief, um, opportunity for them to introduce themselves. There are currently nine candidates and I, we have, um, gotten confirmation from eight that'll be there tomorrow morning, so there won't be time for a lot of Q and A, um, but it is an opportunity to meet them, um, and the city also videotapes the forum presentations and so those are available to watch on Community Access Television at four o'clock on channel one ninety-one or nine seventy or stream on the city's YouTube channel. But the community forum happens every Wednesday morning from eight to nine and it's free, it's open to everybody and it's a different topic each week. Um, and starting tomorrow, we're gonna be at CMU Montrose in Cascade Hall in the meeting room, which is, um, on the corner of Third and Cascade and just invite anyone who wants to learn more about the local school board election, that'll be happening the first week in November. Thanks.
And I guess I'll just say again, it's homecoming weekend. If you're going across Main Street around four o'clock tomorrow, either be prepared for a delay or figure out a different way to go. We'll have the annual homecoming parade on Main Street, volleyball on Thursday, a homecoming football game and crowning of king and queen on Friday, so big weekend for our kids and I hope they all have a great time.
You want a motion? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're outta here.